Is he on route?
I'm not.
Well, hopefully he'll be along in a few minutes. And let's go ahead and get started. And so, thanks everyone for joining us. And this is kind of a new thing we're going to be trying out here to have these meetings to kind of get organized for our regularly scheduled meetings. And we hope this might be some space for some good conversations about upcoming issues, issues that we'll be dealing with at our formal meetings. We obviously won't take any votes at these meetings. But so, thanks everyone for being with us. And I'll turn it over to Avril to get us started.
Great. So, the first thing we'll do is run through the agenda for tomorrow for tonight. I'm actually a tease there. So, could you just run through real quick what the items are and what business? Will you start with all the business? So, the first item was all business and I'll get through to just quickly tell you what he's bringing up for you.
For the medic resolution, the board approved two weeks ago to grant the franchise to the medic. So, what we have done is I've worked with Mr. Tally's attorney, Derek Jones, out of Henderson County to draft that agreement. I believe, looking at my notes, I heard the commission talk about fees, inspections, a one-year term, GPS units, radio set, and make sure that Tally would be located buildings in locations selected by EMS. So, those are all elements included within the agreement and which has been approved. We did have one addition, which I need to get to Lamar for the board, and that is to put in a mandatory HIPAA compliance provision. So, we've included that as well. Just to give you a quick bullet point, so for a one-year term, during 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week, there'll be two ambulances available for emergency and convalescent transport. From 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, there'll be one ambulance available for such transport. To a large degree, what equipment Mr. Tally might choose is needed for the medic trucks might depend on what options he feels are necessary. Because we do know that for a period of time, he's been dispatched without the particular equipment for AVL and computer-aided dispatch, but that would be available. He would have to buy any equipment and have it installed and maintained. IT department would help with programming and installation, but they're not going to be the medic's IT department, so to speak. They would charge a fee, as they do to the other, as to all the 19 fire service districts. Each of them pays $1,500 a year, just as a flat rate fee for support from IT for that programming. And if there's any other particular questions, I'd be happy to hit on that. But I believe we hit all the elements on that. His attorney has agreed with those elements for the term.
Any questions on that item?
For the pre-meeting and the regular meeting sessions, this meeting is called as a special meeting because it's not a regular meeting of the board. So, the purpose of the next item on the agenda for tonight will be the setting of a regular pre-meeting scheduled for the 12 noon on the first and third Tuesdays of the month and continuing with the regular meetings at 5:00 PM on those same dates. So, that one's very simple.
One question. Do we know, can these meetings in this room be recorded and televised on the government channel?
They are being recorded right now.
Yeah.
They can't be streamed live from this room, but we can, you know, put it on the channel or put it on YouTube after.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's, I think that's all great.
And then, we could also program it to air before the meeting. We schedule it the next two weeks. It airs every night, 8:00 PM, the commission meeting does. So, we can put this pre-meeting forward.
Okay. Great.
Thank you for trying to mention that. We're being recorded.
Jumping to TRAM.
Okay, for the Health and Human Services Board, the last time, the statute for the combined HHS Board allows for it to be composed of up to 25 members or more than 25 members. They have been operating for a few years of 23. So, this is just a mechanism, just to pass and say, well, it can be up to 25. We recognize that currently have 23. There's no plans to extend that, but just want to make sure that that's officially in place. If there's any change, it would come from a recommendation from the HHS Board to this board, which would have final say as to number and appointees.
Court orders this 20th of 23, they're ready to comply.
Yes, it does bring it into compliance. The current, the current, the last time this board had a resolution, it appointed up to 19 members.
So, they need to amend what we're doing to be actual. So, right now, our policy says 19, but they have 23. So, they want to increase it to 23. So, we're covering legally where it's supposed to be. The next item is some renovations at three of our buildings, the courthouse, the county that been built, and detention center. They all make exterior renovations, so there's most of a tick.
Tuck point.
Tuck point on our buildings. That's the next item that you will see, and then be presented by our general services folks tonight. The item for 50 Cox Avenue is to award a contract for a single prime contract to do some work at the 50 Cox Avenue.
That's a complete renovation of the interior of that space to make it available for housing of the elections, equipment, and some offices.
Which, which one was that?
It used to be the gin, 50 Cox.
That got blowed up.
Yes.
The next item, Commissioner Browning asked us to bring this board support of the real connection, Western North Carolina. Any comments you want to make on that, sir?
Yes, so this is a resolution that was brought to us by, I'm sorry, I don't have the information right behind me, but there's an organization that's been working on exploring the feasibility of restoring passenger rail service to western North Carolina. You know, some folks might recall, this was an effort that was getting, you know, getting looked at pretty hard about 10 years ago. And then, the, you know, the recession came along and, you know, this is something that would require fairly significant infrastructure upgrades. And, you know, in light of the state basically being broke, they were like, well, let's, you know, we'll come back to this someday. Well, it's coming back. So, there'll be someone with us this evening who's part of the effort, who will, who's more knowledgeable about it, who will talk about the effort. This was discussed briefly at a recent, the most recent NPO meeting, and the NPO did pass a resolution in support of, basically the same resolution. I believe it's also been adopted by the town of Marion, North Carolina. I believe Morganton has also adopted a resolution. You know, the small towns that are located along where this route would be are particularly enthusiastic about the idea because they think it would be something that would bring increased, particular tourist visitation to those parts of western North Carolina. The way that the, as I understand it, the way that this would work, and that this model has been implemented in a couple of eastern North Carolina communities where passenger rail service is also being looked at. What they did initially to determine feasibility and likely usage of those routes was they ran an express bus route in the same location as where the passenger rail service would be to get a sense for, you know, how many folks would use this if there was an express transit connection from, you know, from, I think it was either New Bern or Wilmington, one of those eastern North Carolina communities, to where there's a connection to the eastern North Carolina M-Track service to get a sense of usage. So, and apparently, it's been fairly successful. You know, I kind of intuitively, kind of wonder whether the folks who might use rail would actually use an express bus route. Because I think the rail thing actually would be, actually, I can see that being a pretty popular way to come to Asheville. But, but the folks who are working on this do say that in other places where it's been tried out, that there has been a fairly significant usage, and therefore, they feel like they've gathered some good data to use for analyzing rail service without having to go through all of the costs of actually implementing that. So, that's basically what they want to do, is to try that out from Asheville to Salisbury. And, and if the state funds that, then that would be done for some period of time, and then based on the success of that, it would be folded into the feasibility we're really looking at, actually restoring passenger rail service. So, that's my understanding of the, of what the, where that effort is at and what we'll talk about tonight.
I did skip over consent items. Was there any questions on the consent, on the budget amendment or consent, as we directed the last time? There's a $10,000 budget amendment on consent to accept or grant. If you have no questions, I want to jump over to staff updates, which is at the back of your, the agenda is at the back of your book. And this is what the chairman admitted earlier that we could talk about, things coming in the future, the different boards and agendas. And the first person that's going to present today is going to be Rachel.
I can't direct you to where in your notebooks, but somewhere there's some information, it looks like this, about strategic partnership grants. And there's a fold-out sheet behind it, which is a list of all of the applications that have come in. It's substantial. This is our annual grant to open general nonprofit grants, which we refer to as the strategic partnership grants. Applicants were asked to align their proposals with strategic priorities or items within the county's sustainability plan. We received a total of 51 projects applied for and a total of about $3.1 million in requests. The summary sheet shows for you the number of projects that were granted in FY '19, so our current year, there were 24 projects funded at just shy of a million dollars, $967,000. Looking at what has come in for FY '20 requests, 19 of those, total 51, were requesting a re-grant or a continuation. Some of those are expansion. There were 33 new applications, and you can see dollar amounts by each of these. A few came in late, and we have noted those on the list. What I want to point out is that there are five that are selected to transfer into departments, and those are on the second page of the full list, if you want to look at their names specifically. The Asheville-Bunkham Regional Sports Commission is in collaboration with Economic Development, so working with Pennwell to incorporate that funding request into a departmental budget request. And so, if it is funded within economic development, it is essentially a neutral cost and would be backed out of the request within strategic partnership grants. Same for this set of housing-related investments. The move was to consolidate our housing funding into one department within the county so that we can have a standardized approach to working with Habitat, working with Mountain Housing Opportunities. And so, there's $180,000 worth of dollars that Habitat and Home, Habitat and Mountain Housing had gotten through strategic partnership grants, that we have referred them to apply through the Affordable Housing Services Program for FY '20. And there's the additional $151,000 that we used the strategic partnership grants to budget $151,000 last year to transfer over as a way to increase the Affordable Housing Services Program. So, if we transfer those out of the grant and budget them elsewhere for FY '20, that's a total of $361,000 that would be transferred to departments. The effect is that that reduces what we considered a flat funding level within the grant fund down to about $605,000. As a reminder, the total requested was 3.1 million, so that's leaving us a gap of about $2.5 million, under exactly as you mentioned. Staff needs some direction from the board in terms of process. We've talked about it over the years. We don't have a subcommittee for the staff recommendation process, the secret commissioner-driven grant process. In previous years, we've had those meetings where the applicants come and use a sort of public comment style, three minutes per organization to present about their projects. That's not been scheduled for this cycle. And it's some direction on whether we want to go there. From my perspective, the information that's provided in a three-minute at the microphone does not add a lot of context to each application. One benefit to carving outside, carving aside an afternoon to think about strategic partnership grant applications is that it's scheduled for all of us, and you can leave that day with your votes on which projects you want to have funded. But if there's another way that we can get there without doing the in-person presentations, open to that as well.
Well, I miss the way we've done it since I've been here. We go down this list and we pick, you know, who we would support, who we wouldn't support, cut, add, take away. That's where we've been, and, you know, we've done, all seven of us have done it. Have worked with. And the numbers don't ever seem to come up right once we're done because we went through different, especially with Blonde, but she just picked her full money. And I would say a lot to us, we feel effective, we sell, and we write the number down, and that's all we need to do.
I would like to make the full applications available to you, and we can publish them on a website so that you've got all of the information as well as a cover sheet for each one with any additional context that staff can provide.
Well, most of these, I mean, the three new people, most of these, you know, I think I'm from AB Tech and Appalachian Sustainable did on down the line. That, that I know already.
And then, we can provide a scoring sheet or something, a place for commissioners to indicate yes or no, in full or partial, and then compile that information.
Well, we actually wrote down what we would fund. It wasn't partial.
Yes, last year, you recommended specific dollar amounts.
Exactly.
Some commissioners kind of said full or partial, and there is a little bit of a kind of a staff exercise to take those, each of those seven votes and pull it into a consolidated set of options, which you can then choose from. And we'll do our best to do that.
Well, I want to see if we're, if it's not full and partial, we fit the number down and then we divide it into that number.
Average.
Average.
Average, have each commissioner say what dollar amount you would give each one, and then.
I want to see more, make sure that we have information on the ones we've funded, and that we've funded in prior years, what have they done and what have they accomplished? That's just like when I look at the housing, repairing the homes and all, I want to make sure I see the numbers, how many people were really affected by it. Don't tell me how many were supposed to be affected. I want to know some actual figures, because I have some questions about some of these. I'm hearing one thing from the community and another from them, so I want to see some, make sure we have good numbers, so we can make intelligent decisions, you know? We gave the biggest bang by bucks.
We've got half a year's worth of performance data on a dashboard for you, and I'll get the latest.
Okay.
Information to you. By the time you're making these decisions, you'll have the third quarter of data, which will take us through the end of March, and so that'll be published online by mid-April. And then, there could be a way where you ask agency-specific questions, if you want us to follow up on a project and get more information.
What does mountain housing always do more than anybody else? Mountain housing, I've asked in question, and I've actually had, but I'd like to know, you know, we give them $250,000 to make sure where we do 120 homes. I've asked them for one, and they haven't given me that information.
My understanding of the approach for these three that would be transferred, Asheville Area Habitat, Home Repair, Asheville Area Habitat Housing, and Mountain Housing, Affordable Housing, that those three would, their dollar amounts would be added to the Affordable Housing Services Program, so we wouldn't be earmarking as a line item for this agency and this program, but increasing the project by those dollar amounts, is that accurate?
Yes, and the other thing, I think, that we're trying to do with the Affordable Housing Services Program is bring them into overall competition. So, it's a point-based system, so rather than, as Rachel just pointed out, there's not a designated dollar amount, but bring them into actual competition.
Or did the 240 that we give mountain housing go?
That would be the minimum performance data that Rachel puts together. We can get that for you by the.
Right, they have $80,000 within this program, and we have performance results on that, and they also have funding through various other channels.
Well, I remember when the county were a couple months ago, we'd give them $240,000 for fixing homes up.
For the home repair, yes, for Affordable Housing Services Program. We can follow up with a report.
You know, this can't be, keep stepping up and handing money in, more money and poppin' money, and that's just what we're doing again, right?
We will follow up and let you know. For the, for the purpose of this discussion, no, because they have not made an application to the strategic partnership grant process for this year, but your point is well taken, and we'll make sure you have the information of the results of what.
Well, I mean, I don't know. If they have it asked, we don't need to have a number. If they haven't asked, we don't need a number. They need to ask for a number.
I think that's what they just said, right, they're going to have to apply for it and love to compete for it. Just for transferring this over to planning.
Right.
They'll have to go through that process. So, you're not, you're not earmarking these dollars for, for either Habitat or IMO.
No.
It's just that that sector will have funding, and then whichever proposals are the strongest will get awarded through a process.
Their organizational request was to have it earmarked as a line item, and staff reviewed that and have stuck with the plan to increase the fund and have them go through that same competitive process.
Yes.
And so, those, there are, one, two, three, there are four amounts, the 20,000, the 80,000, the 80,000, and then the under 50, which will fall together if we do this, boost the Affordable Housing Services Program competitively. So, yes, applications, I mean, yes, in-person presentations or no?
You know, I, I think it was good that we did it last year. You know, we had new commissioners, I mean, of course, we have another new commissioner up there. I mean, I, you know, it's a grueling meeting for everyone involved, I think. I always am impressed how much I learned from it, though. You know, people only have three minutes, but you know, if you can't say what you are trying to get done in three minutes, then that's kind of a problem, right? You should, it's kind of your, it's kind of your elevator speech, right? And sure, you don't get into all the nuances of what you accomplish and all the complexities of the issue, but I'm, I'm always very impressed with how good of a job folks do communicating a lot in a short amount of time. But I, especially in light of how many new applications there are, I think it would be, I question, I mean, so I'm sort of working on the assumption that we're not going to spend a lot more in this area than we did in the last budget. I'm kind of thinking about this as probably kind of a continuation level of funding. If that's, if that's where the other commissioners are thinking about it too, I mean, the reality is there's not going to be probably a lot of new projects funded, right? And that's, that's kind of my working assumption, so I personally, I'm not sure it's a good use of time to interview on tons of new applications when, unless the commission is sending some signal that we're interested in investing a lot more in this area in this budget cycle than we did in, you know, the most recent one. So, that's kind of my take, not to say we wouldn't do interviews in the future, but for this budget cycle, it seems like a lot of time for maybe not the best focus of our budget attention.
So, I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure I quite understand how the decisions have been made previously. Is there not a scoring mechanism?
I can walk you through how it happened last year.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, each year, it's a little bit different.
Okay.
And because that's.
Because, I mean, it just isn't kind of subjective.
In large part due to being a commissioner-driven process. And so, staff will create a cover sheet for each application that highlights where it fits in terms of priorities, summarizes the full application, so this is the project and the steps, et cetera, and then calls out certain strengths of the project, as well as any areas where more information might be needed. And that might include previous performance on funded, funding, that might include gaps in the budget that they submit, any information that we want you to notice as you look through. What we're not doing is recommending on a numeric basis, the, you know, what should be funded or at what level, just providing essentially compiling some information for commissioners.
Right, asking if that was an option for us as commissioners.
It's an option.
Y'all have a fundraising background here in terms of scoring grant applications.
And then, what commissioners will do is work independently to, whether it's assign a dollar amount, check yes or no, or whatever, and then staff will take that and then break that line as recommended. We have gone, we have experimented with the sort of, the scoring style process in the past, but unless we have the discipline to stick with it, it ends up sort of competing with the more political aspects of a elected official-driven funding process.
You know, and part of it is, I would think it would be very challenging to just score these in a way, like if you're thinking about housing, it's a little different. It's like, okay, we know kind of what the goal is here, make as much affordable housing as possible. All right, who can, who can deliver the most of that for a set amount of money? And when you're looking at, you know, hey, do we want to continue to support the downtown association's annual event versus Appalachian Sustainable Agriculture? Like, how do you score? I mean, they're just doing such fundamentally different things. I think it does kind of come down to some things that the commission thinks, you know, that's an important thing, and we should be part of it, but scoring it would seem very challenging to me.
It's very broad and includes a lot of different types of projects.
Yeah.
Couple of things, Browney, my thinking is similar to yours in terms of anticipating sort of flat, consistent levels last year, and also, big picture, seeing us moving some of these investments into strategic priority areas, so affordable housing, early childhood education, for instance.
Those are the two that have been pulled out so far.
So far, exactly, yeah. So, seeing, you know, as we look at the totality of how work's getting funded, that's kind of the picture I see. I would agree that it doesn't make sense to sort of have folks do the presentation necessarily this year, but I would love to hear from staff ideas as we think about next year, so that we don't kind of find ourselves in the same position again where we say, gosh, we don't like, or, gosh, it'd be great if we had a better system here. And if there's input, that'd be helpful from the commission and thinking that through, maybe we could do some focus work on that. But it feels like it would be exciting to revamp this process in some ways so that there was more clarity and more process around it.
You know, a few, a few thoughts. I mean, some of these, some of these are organizations that we have supported fairly consistently for a while, you know, and so, you know, one thought would be to maybe think about, you know, there's just certain organizations, not to say they're just assured permanent funding, but maybe we do want to look at doing some multi-year funding, even though we can't legally bind teacher commissions, but for the ones that we sort of anticipate there's likely to be support, or look at, you know, thinking about multi-year arrangements so that we don't sort of spend so much of our staff's time, so much of our time thinking about stuff that's probably likely going to be replicated based on how we've done in the past. And that would, that would narrow down the list of, I mean, that would, that would, a lot of the groups on there would now be potentially in that pot. And then, in that way, maybe, you know, there'd be some process to, maybe we would say we're going to have limited funding for new initiatives in the future, and we have a commission subcommittee or something to kind of focus on that, and so it doesn't kind of burn up, you know, the entire commission's time looking at new stuff. But I mean, I don't, I don't feel right to saying we won't, we won't even consider something. There might be some great idea here that we need to make sure we could hear it, but maybe we have, you know, a subset of the commission to take a look at new applications or something like that.
Right, so would you like us to develop some criteria, the scoring, whatever matrix you would like us to develop back to you? We can do that. We'll be bringing a packet with all of the details of the applications. We can bring that back, bring your criteria, bring some metrics back, bring whatever performance they've done in the past. bring some metrics back, bring whatever performance they've done in the past, how they're doing in the community. We can bring that back to you this year. And for next year, we can look at multi-year funding, a different process of how we can do this differently next year. Would that be appropriate?
So, I apologize for being late, but kind of teed up my comments pretty good. So I'm gonna try to get through about three things. Myself, Brownie, and Mike have participated in this for six years. It has been, and I won't say on every vote, on, you know, on every line, it has, it, it, it has been, I don't like to use the term political, but there are people that know, I mean, they're, they identify with certain things, they know certain groups, and not everybody does. And so, sometimes, you know, support has gravitated to those areas, and I'm not saying they don't perform, but my thought would be, and has been for several years, is that there should be a certain amount of money associated with this. There should be certain matrices, matrix, certain matrix, there should be certain things, we should have performance reviews on these. Now, some of them will fall out into little small things that you, I mean, they don't, they don't have the staff, they don't have the time, they don't have the people, they're just asking for a small grant. And that, you know, at some point in time, we gotta handle those differently. I don't think that if they're new, just because they're new, that they get booted out of the process. I think they should ask because someone may come along that can, that can do that particular thing much better than someone that's been doing it for 10 years. And just because someone, we, we have been supporting someone for 10 years, doesn't mean we support them in the 11th year, because they have to, they have to perform. And they should be able to do these things better than we can do them in-house, because that's why we're supporting them. And I don't like the commissioner's scoring system, you know, because it's actually unfair to some commissioners that are not familiar with certain people. So it should be more collective, it should be more based on a dollar amount, we should have matrix, we should have goals and metrics coming from county manager and staff, which will be driven by community input, because we'll give the input, you know, to whoever's, you know, putting this together. But I don't wanna, you know, turn away, you know, new people, because again, they could be much more efficient at delivering the, you know, the goods and services to, to the public. Plus, I'm a fan of Chow Chow, so I, I gotta hear what Chow Chow's about. So y'all country people will get that. So that's kind of where I'm at, you know, the way we've done it in the past, it's been kind of, I mean, it's, it's okay, I mean, you know, you know, and Al may talk about somebody, we may know somebody, you know, I may give him my opinion, he gives me his opinion, which is fine and helpful because we are representing, you know, our constituents. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't be the end-all.
I think staff would be excited to bring together a structure across us that has more objectivity and clarity and transparency around all of that.
Well, it's got to re, it's got to reach, it's got to get out in the county. I mean, this can't be just, you know, you know, my little community and nobody else. I mean, we should be seeking out to make sure that we're covering, you know, Swan and Ollin, and South Slope, and, you know, Lester, or wherever it is, we should be covering, you know, those areas with, with a lot of these services, so.
So how far can we get in terms of that, coming up with a structure that meets your needs and goals for this coming FY20 cycle?
And I'll say one more thing and I'll hush. And if y'all believe that, Brownie said-
I wear my short pants.
Yeah, there you go. So, I don't have a pro, and, and, and I don't have a problem listening to all of them, you know. I've done it for a long time, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me to listen to 40 of them, give their three-minute speech, but that's me, so.
I think- What we're asking for is two things. One is come up with a structure on the short one for this year where we can bring it together. But more important than that, long-term, let's work on a, hopefully a solution to this next year where we'll have a process, we'll know it's there, we can get it out to everybody and it'll work. Because I'll tell you, this is my third time, and going through the first two, they were too darn political, I mean, that's all it was. You know, whoever comes and makes the most noise gets the most money when you boil it down.
Well, and that's why I was asking about some type of mechanism to determine, to make it more fair and equitable to those.
Yeah, but that's, I think the staff, y'all, hopefully, you can come up with that or something to help us there, and we'll give you that input, don't worry.
Well, the other thing too is, you know, with our, our new county manager, I mean, it wouldn't, you know, bother me, you know, if you said you got 1.85 million, or you got 2.36 million, you know, and then-
Or 600,000.
Yeah, I mean, tell us what, or what is 600,000, or 600,000, is it 600,000?
For whatever it is. It was what we funded last year.
Is that what we funded?
Once you back up the housing, the housing, which is what you're gonna give us more.
Sorry. But whatever it is, you know, there, there, there is a number that works in our budget. I don't know what that number is, but somebody knows what that number is that works in our budget.
Then I can walk you through that later, that was at the beginning.
And then we work, then we work to that, that number, so.
So we'll, we'll bring back the process.
Good to go.
We just have, I feel like we have this coming in every year about how to make it better. Every year I think we make it a little better, but it's, 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 I wish there was some good to this.
We've gone away and brought back resolutions to revamp that never has quite taken. There hasn't been the will to redesign it, but we'll, we'll get together with April's guidance and what she's seen from other communities and bring together something for your consideration.
But here's what I hear, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do interviews with every group this year. I mean, Joe spoke up for it, and I appreciate that, but I haven't heard anybody else speak up for that, doing the three-minute interviews with each of them. Okay, so it sounds like that's, we're not gonna do that this year, right? Y'all are gonna give us all the information on all the applications.
On our website, on a public website.
Sure, somewhere we can check that out.
Typically, we put it on-
So I guess, yeah, so I guess just like, I mean, I, I, it sounds like there's general support for funding at similar levels to last year. So just, but if we're not gonna do the interviews, just, I guess I'd like this question, like, how are we gonna analyze all these new applications? Are people just gonna agree to kind of voluntarily kind of go read that information? And then if there's something that really sparks interest, that it's gonna be sort of up to commissioners to kind of, you know, kind of elevate those and say, hey, this is, this is something we should really take a look at, or if there's something that the staff find, you know, particularly compelling, that, that it's gonna be one of those two processes that sort of, you know, kind of bring, bring it to some additional discussion.
As I'm sitting here listening, the one thing I want to work with Rachel and staff with me, we'll leave out some recommendations as well. So we'll bring you back the matrix, how we scored it, and give you some recommendations, and you can add, take away, subtract, throw it all out. We want to at least give you a starting point to work from.
And in that, I would, I would find it helpful if, if we can at least flag proposals that are aligned with other strategic priorities, just so we're around criminal justice reformer work, thriving diverse workforce, just-
So you'll see anything that's aligned, not on there, but when you-
Yeah.
You'll see what strategic priority it aligns with, and if not a strategic priority, what within the sustainability plan, because like K-12 education, not one of the strategic priorities, but if in the overall priorities of the county.
For the county.
But that, that's just, you know, puts them in a, in a column. That doesn't, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna support them more than someone else provides a great service doesn't fall directly into the, those priorities. Still gotta find out what Chow Chow is. Is anybody know what it is?
I think it's a food festival that's been launched by a bunch of local restaurateurs, and Chow Chow features prominently in it.
It's not, it's not.
It's not.
I think, I think they're serving lots of variations on Chow Chow, at Chow Chow.
I'm definitely going. I'll definitely be a customer.
Whether we support it or not, we're definitely going.
Sponsor.
So I don't know, I mean, over the years, we've, we've tried to get, you know, the, these, you know, I, I keep saying companies, but that, that's, that comes from where, but, you know, these nonprofits, where the ones that did a really good job could perform the services less than we could perform them in-house, and then we, we wouldn't do business with those. We, we would expend taxpayer dollars and move them into the budget. So we're not fooling with this. You know, it becomes a smaller project, maybe even a much, much smaller amount.
That has occurred. We've maintained contracts within many of our departments that don't, that are reflective of this competitive process.
Well, it would be good, good to know, you know, what the, you know, our new manager is. The ones that we have done that with, how are they doing? You know, an objective review of those by our new, new manager and staff. You know, how are they doing? You know, is it, are they performing very, very well, or are they weak? You know, do we need to find someone else to do it, or do we need to let them do more?
All right.
Thanks, Rachel.
And just, last, last question here, just in terms of process, if there, so we have an Early Childhood Education Committee, and we have an Affordable Housing Committee, they said any, any projects that fall within those categories will go through those committees for discussion along with any other funding that they, that might get allocated in those arenas.
And we made that effective for proposals, effective FY20, so the planning now.
Great.
Okay, out of the people that you say we still contract that-
Within the department, yes.
Does physical legal fit one of them?
Yes.
Okay, now they're asking for another 120,000.
I can explain the context on that, either right now or later if you like. The Health and Human Services contract was 200, for this current year, $230,000-ish. They're scaling back how, how much Health and Human Services is gonna purchase from physical legal services. So in order to hopefully retain that same level of funding, they've come in through the grant process with a request for the difference being 130. So that means Health and Human Services is continuing to purchase about $100,000 worth of legal services for their clients through that organization. And in order to organizationally make up the difference and keep the general civil legal aid available to the community at large, they're coming in with a request for county funds through this grant process. And that's the kind of per-project information that we will put on the cover sheet for you so that you've got full context.
But I knew that we've been giving them money, but it shows up as a new deal here. And that's not-
Essentially, the department is scaling back how, how much it needs, still performing, staying in their role as a supplier or contractor.
If they don't, if they don't need it, why do we need to step it up?
I think that's an important question.
That's a really good question. And, and I'm a fan of a lot of things that they do. But just because they have a con, they have a contract with the county, and then the county decides that we're not going to fund all of that contract because they don't have the need or they're not, not meeting the, the requirements or whatever, then, okay, well, we'll just come over here and ask. That's what we're trying to avoid. And so, I think you, I think you know that, so we're preaching to the choir, but, but at the same time, they gotta, they gotta, probably have to have a mechanism to, to ask for it. But as Commissioner Fier said, I, I tend to agree, that is not necessarily a new request.
Correct. And I know we've used more, we've used a lot of time and we've moved into talking kind of about it project by project. If we are gonna provide staff recommendations, that is exactly the kind of information that we're gonna take into consideration in bringing you recommendations and explanation of those recommendations.
Well, I think anytime we bring something up, and this, this is the first time we've done this, we're probably gonna have to get used to, you know, the fact that this is what's gonna happen. We're going to, we're gonna talk about it.
Yes.
I mean, we're gonna discuss it. You know, if, if we get through all of it, I guess we get through all of it. But, you know, this is the time that we have an option to discuss it. This is when we're gonna have to bring up our concerns so that as staff goes in the direction and they come back, we don't have to go that way again, so.
So bigger picture, maybe when we get information back, we could also, if y'all aren't, maybe you could also flag the other relationships that the county has or that entity. So AB Tech, for instance, I see on here also where-
Yes, that's a component of what we included last year.
Okay, great. Great.
Okay, thanks, Rachel.
She'll do that one more time.
Hey, I'm sorry, this is my last thing I'm gonna say about that. Can we just make sure when we do our budget, when we do our budget, I do think that it is very important that we're really open about how the organizations get funded through departments too. So can we make sure that that's a really, you know, and the budget's, whatever, but that we make sure that that's really clear? Because, I mean, just to kind of say the obvious, what all these organizations want is to not go through this process, they want to work with staff and just get their money in a line item, in a budget, and for, and I would want the exact same thing. And so, and a lot do, right? And it's fine. But the groups that go through this process, you know, we spend a lot of time kind of wrestling with this stuff, and, I mean, and until the day comes when we decide we're just gonna fully delegate this to staff, which there's some arguments for, I'm personally not there yet, because I think that there's some benefit to kind of wrestling with this stuff in a really open way. But I just want us to be really transparent about the projects and nonprofit groups that do get funded through departments, through contracts, because it's, in a, in a way, it's really not so different. It's just a, it's just that's part of how it works in the budget, and the other part is, is here. So, all right, I'll shut it now. Hey, Tim.
Good afternoon. So in your packet, you should have the next document, which is a memo from me related to Lenamar. And so we've talked about Lenamar a lot over the past year and a half. We're sort of approaching kind of the next phase, which is the renegotiation and formal approval of a consolidated agreement. And so to do that, we're asking that you call a public hearing for April 2nd. And during that public hearing, just like with any other economic development agreement, you would vote formally on the agreement that we present to you. In order to call a public hearing in April 2nd, we have to do a notice of public hearing, which requires 10 days advance notice. So basically, we're telling you today that we're gonna do that if you're in agreement. So we would issue the notice in the next couple of days, that way we hit that 10-day window, and then we'd move forward with the April 2nd public hearing. So, real quickly, won't spend much time, just in terms of background, I've presented to you on Lenamar on a number of occasions. The story hasn't changed. We have an agreement in principle with the company on an actual agreement that Michael Frue and I have worked on. The story here is we've got an agreement from 2011 and 2014. We bring those into a single consolidated and modified agreement. That agreement has no new incentives, it has no new capital targets, it has no new job targets, it maintains everything at the same as the original agreements. The only exception is that we're extending the timeline. So we're giving Lenamar a couple more years to hit their targets. The reason we're giving them more time is because due to some economic impacts related to Caterpillar leaving, Lenamar has missed some of their targets with us, and that was publicized last year when we deferred a $1.5 million payment to them formally in a commissioner meeting. So we're giving them the opportunity to get caught back up. If you've heard them on the radio, they've got a number of advertisements looking for new jobs, so it just seems that they are a little push forward.
There has been a couple of things that's improved. One is communication's improved in the last several months with them, which I appreciate, and, and, you know, I do that. So I want to thank you for that, and thank the commissioners for, you know, for listening. You know, it's an important employer, you know, I assume.
Absolutely. On April 2nd, we will have leadership from Lenamar at the meeting, just like with any other public hearing. So you'll get an opportunity in that meeting to quiz them if you'd like on kind of their, their business model moving forward. For any questions on the agreement, though, myself or Michael Frue would be your best point of content.
And just to, to throw a reminder, right, I think the other reason they didn't miss the targets were, you know, we worked hard with them and with progress energy to try to get that new foundry built on the site, it just wouldn't fit, mainly because of the railroad configuration and the railroad right-of-way, so that's why that, that structure ended up in Henderson County.
Cool. Any questions? Thank you.
And then this is the last comment, she's coming up on an MTO draft agreement discussion. There's nothing in your packet on that, she just wants to give you a brief note that will come before you.
As I understand it, another function of this meeting is to help you have a heads-up and time to consider items that are gonna be on the next agenda. So this is a heads-up about an item for April 2nd. The East Haven Apartments funding that was approved by the Board of Commissioners on February 5th will be coming back to the Board of Commissioners in the form of a contract for consideration and approval. As a reminder, the overall project creates 95 units of affordable housing. The, most of the components of the loan, 2.2 million dollar loan, were approved as part of the vote that evening. part of the blue vote that evening, um, including a 20-year repayment term and 0% interest. And as you recall, some annual repayments throughout the course of that 20 years and a balloon payment for the remaining balance at the end of that 20-year term, um, extending the period of affordability from 30 years to the full physical life of the building and the commitment to pay property taxes or not to go for that property tax waiver. There is one item left for consideration in terms of the structure of that agreement, and that's the dispersment schedule. That's the, how, the timeframe of when we pay county funds that $2 million out from the county to Mountain Housing. Um, staff at the county has been working with Mountain Housing opportunities to identify, we've got their original request and then, and a schedule that would be agreeable that wouldn't require any funds in this current year, this current fiscal year's budget, since it's not an item that has already been included within the budget. That will be considered by the Affordable Housing Committee this afternoon as part of that meeting and would likely, that dispersment schedule as part of the overall contract be coming to the Board of Commissioners in, in the form of a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Committee, which, as a reminder, is Commissioners Edward Belcher and Chairman. It's our first time, first meeting of the new committee, so there's still some things that we will need to figure out in terms of how that structure will work. Uh, but that's the intent, is that it would be routed through committee, come to the board in the form of a recommendation. You would be able to see the contract, including the terms they've previously agreed to and any new terms like the dispersment schedule.
Do you anticipate that in two, so the commissioner whacked on this in two weeks from now?
Yes.
Do we anticipate we'd have, actually have like the loan agreement prepared by then?
Yes. You'll see it today.
All right.
Oh, we gotta draft a note of deed to trust and get it over to NHO for their approval. That's quick and easy once, you seem to be fairly settled on this agreement. So, I don't know that we need to get in, into it today, but there was, um, you know, this was approved on a, on a split note, not because, uh, we didn't like the project where it was going, the support, we just didn't like the, the loan process. We discussed, um, coming up with a better way to do that. So, I just want to put that out there for the new, you know, county manager and, and staff and that we don't let that, you know, fall apart, um, that we, and that we, we put some time into it and make, you know, and make, make that happen so we don't get into the, you know, the situation that we, we did it in meeting.
And staff has been working hard to, to provide information that can be considered by the committee to begin that process. We've had a group, um, cross-functional departments, so planning, legal, finance, budget, performance management, strategic partnerships, getting together on a regular basis, working both on this particular project as well as those other two that you've heard, um, some mention of that are in queue, the old Haywood Development from Habitat and the Hubbard-Hashford Buncombe House, talking about those three, but also talking process. And we'll be coming to you for guidance later today. Questions?
Thank you.
Hello. Chairman, Commissioner, um, I am here to talk about, uh, this is also an item that's not in your packet, but something that will be coming before you, I think, uh, in the next couple of weeks. But we've received a bunch of grants where, that they're funding some positions, um, in the county and these, these grant-funded positions are gonna last for approximately two years. Our personnel ordinance is relatively silent as how we treat grant-funded employees. So, what we are going to be bringing before you is a policy as to how the county will treat grant-funded employees in terms of what benefits will they receive, um, you know, whether they're, that they're an at-will employee and basically making sure that there's no conflicts between, so that the employees know, uh, what they're getting into when accepting the job and also hopefully to, to retain them. So, you know, we're, we're, and the plan is to give them basically full benefits like we would a-county employees such as healthcare, which we would have to anyways under the Affordable Healthcare Act for anybody that works more than 30 hours a week. We'd have to give health insurance anyways. Uh, you know, we'll also be giving them time off, annual leave, uh, balances, they'll be able to participate in the 401K and they'll be able to participate in the state retirement. So, that's basically sort of an overview. We'll have a distinct policy for you to vote on, but that's pretty much the highlights of it.
That will be 100% funded from the grant?
Yes.
Health insurance.
Yes, all the benefits. It's my understanding that all the benefits will be funded.
But when they're...
How many employees?
I, I believe it's five.
Six.
Six. Maybe.
So, if they're grant-funded though, is there's, just somehow there's a recognition that like when the grant funds are gone, there's no guarantee that you'll be able to continue work.
Right, right.
Sort of expire unless we make a deliberate decision to hire them and...
Right. Or, yes. Exactly. Yeah, so they would be an at-will employee. That's, that's one of the important things to differentiate between a regular employee who has property interests in their job versus a grant-funded employee who doesn't.
What are the grants or at least one or two of the topics?
The Safety and Justice Challenge, um, through the MacArthur Foundation included quite a bit of funding that is going into community partner organizations, but there are some functions that are county-operated like pre-trial services for that risk assessment, um, and then performance management, which are staff positions.
Sounds great. Kurt, thank you.
Oh, MSD and Duke Energy, also PSNC have all reached out for easement agreements across county property. PSNC here is not quite ready. Uh, MSD has for years had an existing line across the western boundary of the Ferry Road property. Also have a pump station down there next to the river. The line goes under the river, then up along that way, gets on the Farid Road. It turns out that, uh, oh, and there's, there's a, there's a map in the booklet back there. You'll see the green line there where they're aiming to, to shoot. Uh, it hits the county property in three locations and the real purpose of this is to abandon, uh, you, you remember the complicated history of this parcel, being county property, Henderson County property, part of the water agreement. So, there was various easements for this MSD and processed ideas to abandon those and then, uh, dedicate this easement agreement on an as-built location. So, it's nothing new. It's just as-built. And we did get approval of the party, that Carnegie Holdings, which has the offer to purchase the contract, and we're still trying to sell that to them. Their options run out, uh, toward the end of June, but they're still in play. They may be trying to shop that property. That's just as a little aside with their interest in approvals they've gotten from the city. But they, they've agreed to the location of this and they know it's not gonna affect their, their, uh, construction plans. The Duke Energy Progress out in the Bent Creek area, they're working to put in underground utilities out there because of all the lambs and trees and the falls they've had and power disruptions. So, they're, they've been working for some time. There's also a, an image near the back of the booklet, which is just basically a GIS that shows from Doodle, Danny Brook Drive. And that's the Bent Creek Community Club property, which the county owns and leases to the club. And they want to go underground up an existing service road which facilities uses. They just wanna make sure, our facilities just have to make sure that they can still drive over this easement. They can. And they're making an addition to that easement as I requested to make sure, verify it and memorialize that we're gonna use that and still access and drive over it. I think it's at the very back. And, uh, uh, also, the, the standard requirement is that we can't build and prove it on. We can't put a concrete slab or building on top of the easement, which is standard. So, those are the two that will be ready, um, assuming I get a letter from Duke Energy to attach to their draft, um, agreement for April 2nd. And there's no notice requirement for some reason under easements, even though it's really, it's a grant of property right. There's no 10-day notice before or after the board just approves it or not.
Right. Is that it?
We have one more.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board members. Uh, this is just more of an update. At your last three-by-threes, um, passed out some information as it relates to the text amendment for manufactured homes, expanding those into additional zoning districts. Uh, due to an unfortunate, uh, legal posting with Citizen Times, that's why it's not on your agenda tonight. It'd be placed on the April 2nd agenda. Um, so, basically, we just wanted to clarify one thing. We did, uh, talk to legal and sort of clarified that, you know, if there, um, a couple you brought up, uh, well, can we make a change to some of the finished materials that were being proposed? One of the items was wood. Um, and we'd be happy if you guys so direct us to, to make that change as part of your public hearing. Um, and we can certainly facilitate that. So, we just wanted to update you on that. And we will be providing, uh, a couple PowerPoint slides to help us sort of envision what the finished materials will look like. Um, but just basically, we wanted to give you that update and, uh, we'll be holding that public hearing on April 2nd.
So, just a point of information, you know, for the board, that concern came from myself, um, um, that, you know, we wanted to make sure that when this was, uh, finished, that the housing fit within the community and that had permanent foundation under it and wood is not permanent. And so, we wanted to make sure that it had the, you know, the correct, you know, it was, you know, finished material that was masonry. And so, that's why we requested that, that change. So, I hope y'all hear me okay. My voice is shot, but, um, but anyhow, that's just making sure that the, the finished product is, uh, looks fantastic.
And those are the main points, uh, foundation, finished materials, multi-sectional, and the date of 1976 is important because that's the first year where you actually had a HUD label fixed to the unit itself.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So, before we adjourn, I wonder if, um, just, there might be any kind of, um, comments or thoughts from commissioners or staff about just this meeting? That, this is, you know, the first time we've done this and I, I like it and I think it's useful to kind of just go through these things, have some informal discussion. Um, any feedback from commissioners about, or staff about any kind of aspect of this since we do wanna start making this kind of more regular occurrence?
Any changes at all?
I, I also liked this a lot today. Appreciate the work staff did. Um, one feature of the three-by-threes I've liked is that it's also a place where people can bring up questions and ideas more spontaneously or sort of things that have been on the back burner that are coming back up. So, I just wonder if we can build in some process and, and if that can happen spontaneously, Brownie's like, hey, I wanna talk about this today, or if we need to have a formal process around a commissioner saying, these are items I'd just like follow-up information on, or do we ever get an answer on that or here's an update on this?
I think the spontaneity is the right way. It should be a structure if it pops in your head.
Okay. Yeah, so, cer- certainly. Um, and so, maybe, maybe at the beginning of the meeting, we'll have kind of a, you, maybe you could kind of, um, we could have a review of what's planned to be discussed. And then if there's additional things folks wanna bring up, they could say, okay, here's some, you know, if we have time, uh, 'cause there are other meetings that start after this one. So, in some cases, we may be time-constrained, but if there's time, then folks can say, hey, can we add this, this, or this to the, uh, agenda as we go through? So, that, would that be a good way to do that?
Yeah.
Great. Um, you know, the only, the other question I've kind of had as we, as thinking about, in terms of thinking about these meetings is, you know, sometimes we do, um, we put items on the agenda that are not intended to be voted on right away, but to kind of get an issue out there, you know, kind of get some initial discussion about that. Obviously, we're not gonna vote on any issues in these meetings, but this could also be a place where if, you know, in addition to like all the staff information we just got, commissioners have ideas they wanna put forward for initial discussion, you know, this could be a place to do that as well. Not to say, we, you couldn't also do it at a regular meeting. I mean, there's, um, so, I don't think we would wanna limit them to this meeting, but this does provide an additional space for sort of commissioners to bring up issues that you wanna, um...
The one thing that I, you know, when we brought Mountain Housing in and they got to speak and then we had to turn around and go back into a closed session with, uh, our attorney, that's not respectful to the people that's sitting in the room. Uh, anybody that wants to come and speak on something, they go toward the end of the line. They don't go to the top of the, in our meetings, you know, I don't care who it is. And, you know, that was one of the things you said that wasn't gonna be voted on. There's been a couple of those and, uh, but now when somebody wants to just come in and speak to us about something, then it ends up on another agenda. Uh, that needs to go further down. That don't need to be at the top. We need our business first. They can bring their business last.
Do you mean in terms of where it goes on the agenda?
As far as, you know, I've seen our people, the staff, stuck all the way at the bottom. Oh, he's talking about, uh, you're talking about staff. You know, if they've gotta make a presentation, put that in front so that they're not sitting there the whole meeting waiting. Our business in front of the people is just gonna come forward to speak about what they want. You know, you give them the top line to do it. Then, we had to leave the room, so, there's actually people that left that, you know, we had to go. Well, we should've just did our meeting with attorney that time, letting him speak first.
Okay. Yeah. Um, I mean, of course, the old business, new business, there's certain things that just kind of we do that we're, that they're in. We always, I, you know, I think the staff and, you know, we try to figure out how to get folks, if there's a lot of people in the room, how to deal with stuff so that folks can go home, or if there's a lot of staff. I mean, I agree that those things should be, try to, try to take care of them as soon as we can so that we're not sitting there until late at night wherever possible.
You just gotta be faithful.
But we also don't want, you know, inexpensive, you know, set of attorneys sitting there for hours and hours too. So, sometimes we do need to take care of those things so that those folks can go home too because they, they tend to, they tend to wait with hours.
I would just bring up the point that the structure and how you have, you know, the meeting set up is part of your official meeting policy. So, if you wanna change something and move something around on how the agenda gets set up, probably looking at...
We'd have to change.
You'd need to look at the policy and just, you know, maybe make some changes to that, which is not a big deal.
Sure. You know, the only other feedback I would have would be, um, the setup is a, is a little awkward. It's just kind of hard to see everybody. I wonder if there might be some ways we might, um, just set the tables up a little differently so it's easier to see, uh, see folks on the wings, so to speak. And, um, you know, if we are gonna do more at these meetings on our, you know, a regular basis where we, you know, we talk about some substantive issues here, then I anticipate we'll start getting more members of the public who will come to these meetings too. And I think there's room unless it's something that's really gonna pack the house. So, I think that's okay.
I was thinking I had to do this to see you guys.
Yeah, a little bit more of a, some kind of curve or something. I don't know. Anyway, all right. Well, everybody, thanks so much. We're gonna get out of here a couple minutes early. So, we'll adjourn this and see y'all in a little while.
Brownie?
I do have one thing I need to tell you guys about. Today, I asked in low to send, in low, to send a medium of letter to refer districts of wanting a new write-off policy.